All meetings are ordered, please. Supervisor Hess, would you lead us in an invocation?
Please bow your heads. Almighty God, our Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to unite in this moment of prayer at the start of this meeting. This is a special privilege and a freedom we have here in America. And, Father, we know that our freedoms do not come without sacrifice. And we offer thanks to you for those who serve and have served in our armed forces defending those freedoms. We are truly blessed by you through them. Lord, tonight I offer special thanks to you for the volunteer firefighters and public safety employees of this county for their selfless acts of compassion and bravery that often go unnoticed. May you give them the courage and strength to face the daily stress and hardships of their jobs. Father, with grateful hearts, we look back on the years of service that John Riley gave to the citizens of this county and his administrator, and we pray that the new administrator will seek your guidance and strength in dealing with the challenges that lay before us. We look ahead to the promise that the future holds and dedicate ourselves in service to you and to the citizens of Frederick County. Father God, we ask for your strength and guidance to do the tasks you set before us. Keep us concerned about the welfare and improvement of our county, the safety and pride of our homes, and the moral and spiritual values that guide our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Vice Chairman DeHeaven, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Stand, place the flag for the pledge, please. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Option of the agenda, Mr. Williams.
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Supervisor DeHeaven is your second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton, discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The agenda is adopted. Consent agenda, Mr. Williams.
For the consent agenda, Tabs D and H. Tab D is a proclamation for National Telecommunicators Week in Frederick County, April 12th through 18th, 2015. And Tab H is the report of the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Questions? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Supervisor Lofton, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
By Supervisor Hess, discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The consent agenda is approved. Next is a public hearing on the fiscal year 20...whoops, excuse me, I'm gonna change the things a little here. We have some guests tonight, and I meant to do it early. Boy Scout Troop 107, Redlands Day Care. Rick McMahon is the scout leader, and if he would come forward and bring his scouts forward, and if they would introduce themselves at the microphone, please. We would like to know who you are. Hold that thing down.
I'm Nick Festa.
Ayyyy.
You don't need to say anything, you're on the line.
I'm Charlie Bowen.
Andrew Hendershot.
Drew Tanger.
Robbie Moncrief.
Killian Lashalt.
Mason Eustace.
Joshua Foltz.
Gates Triggs.
And I'm Matthew Lashalt, Assistant Scout Master.
Glad to have you here this evening. Now we'll go to the public hearing for the fiscal year 2015-2016 budget, rules of order. This is a public hearing. It's been called by the Board of Supervisors pursuant to the requirements of the Code of Virginia to receive comments on the proposed budget and tax levies for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2016. This budget is prepared for information and fiscal planning purposes only so that the Board of Supervisors may have the benefit of your comments. It is our desire to have an orderly hearing. In an effort to achieve this, the following rules of order will prevail. All speakers must be recognized by the chairman. Each speaker should come to the podium and address their comments directly to the Board of Supervisors. You should state your name and your magisterial district. Each speaker should be as brief as possible and limit his or her remarks to more than three minutes. No speaker will be allowed to speak more than once until all who wish to speak have a chance to do so. Speakers are encouraged to be direct, to the point, and as brief as possible. It is the purpose of this hearing to receive your comments about the proposed budget. It is not the purpose of this hearing for the Board to debate questions, engage in debate with speakers, nor to make comments themselves. This is not intended to be a debate, and comments to the audience are not appropriate. Unruly or rude behavior will not be tolerated, and the Board reserves the right to limit the length of the hearing, especially if no new information is being presented. Mr. Williams, are you making the presentation?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors. We do have a presentation that outlines the budget. It's about 16 slides. Starting in, the total advertised budget for FY 2016 is $275,884,464. The school-related budgets equal about 66 percent of that. That's the reddish brown color on the bottom portion there. Public safety equates to 17 percent, and that includes sheriff, fire and rescue, and the regional adult detention center. The remaining...and that's the blue. The remaining 17 percent includes non-school and non-public safety items. That's administration, public works, parks, social services, community and economic development, the landfill fund, airport, Shawnee Land Sanitary District Fund, and Lake Holiday. The proposed budget shows increases in local revenue of approximately $8.8 million. The local taxes that are part of the revenues include property taxes, machinery and tools tax, business license tax, utility tax, sales tax, lodging tax, and meals tax. The increased revenues proposed to be used to fund increases in overtime for fire and rescue, increases in operating costs, increased contributions to the regional jail and CSA fund, full year costs of the FY 15 salary survey adjustments, cost for the Round Hill Fire Station debt and operating expenses, FY 16 salary adjustments, new positions in public safety, and new teaching and technology support positions for the school system. And those are all outlined on that slide. The next slide shows general fund revenue. As you can see, property taxes and other local taxes together equal approximately 90 percent of the general fund revenue. The property taxes are on the right side in the purplish color, and then the other taxes are that greenish gray on the upper left. This slide shows a seven-year history of the adopted general fund budgets, going back to FY 09. The average annualized increase over the past seven years is an annualized rate of 2 percent. There've been fluctuations, but the annualized increase is 2 percent. Moving on to the next slide, this shows the general fund budget in more detail. And as you will see, over half of it goes for transfers for the school system, approximately $86 million on the left-hand side there. And then the largest component item of the remainder of it is public safety, which is about 20 percent in the reddish-orange on the upper right. Some of the other funds that are included in the overall total budget are shown here. During budget work sessions, focus was given to general fund expenditures, including local funds transferred to school funds. This slide, though, shows the other funds that are in the total advertised budget and the proposed FY 16 changes in those funds. One explanatory note, the Economic Development Authority Fund is a new fund created during the current year and was previously part of the general fund. The Board will recall that we moved from the former Economic Development Commission to the Economic Development Authority, so it just needs to be accounted for differently. This slide shows the breakdown of sources for the school operating funds. The county transfers approximately 49 percent of the funds that are used for school operating costs. This does not, incidentally, include the $14.6 million that's transferred for the school debt fund. This is just the operating. I note that the transfer from the county's general fund of 49 percent exceeds the 47 percent that the state is putting into it. So the county is doing more than the state now to support our schools. And like the other side previously for the county-side general fund, this is the history of school operating fund budgets going back to FY 09, shows that same information. And likewise, while there've been, obviously, fluctuations, the annualized rate of increase between '09 and proposed FY 16 is 1.3 percent. And then this is, again, since most of the budget work session discussions have been about the operating fund, this shows for schools, this shows all of the other school funds and the proposed FY 16 budgets for them and changes from the current year. In total, these school funds, all school funds are increasing by approximately $5.7 million. Incidentally, the one that's there is School Private Purpose. It's a bit of an odd name. What that is, is trust funds that were dedicated to the schools, and it's just the accounting term that's used for those of School Private Purpose. But they're private funds that were dedicated. Some brief facts about the Frederick County Public Schools budget. It's anticipated that the student population for Frederick County Public Schools will increase by 74 students next year for a total of 13,166 students. For FY 16, the FCPS cost per student is projected to be $11,615. And in comparison, the cost per student for FY 14 was $10,595, and for FY 15, $11,269. The increase in the local transfer to the school operating fund is approximately $6.7 million, or 10.2 percent over the previous year. And this slide shows a history, going back to FY 09, of transfers to the school operating fund. The proposed FY 16 transfer exceeds the, going back to FY 10, transfer by approximately $15 million, or 27 percent. And this is an interesting slide. The state has standards, requirements, that the localities must meet in funding the schools. And what the state requires that the county fund for the schools for FY 16 is approximately $31 million. The proposed funding that the budget offers is $72 million, which is about 130 percent more than required. And in this regard, I note that Frederick County ranks 20th highest in the state out of 135 localities in actual school funding that the county provides versus what the state, the bare minimum that the state would require be provided. To compare, the statewide average for local support in excess of the required level is 81.7 percent. So again, most localities are providing 81.7 percent over the requirement. Frederick County's at, proposed to be at about 130 percent. Moving on, we have some comparisons with other localities, real estate tax rates. This slide has the real estate tax rates of surrounding and similar localities. It's pretty much the core group that we've historically used. And it shows the current, so that would be before their current budget cycles, but the current rates for the other localities, and then the proposed rate for Frederick County there on the left in the orangish color of 56 cents. And you'll note, obviously, that Frederick County's proposed rate will place it as being one of the lowest real estate tax rates of the comparable localities. And then this is, again, the same group of localities and shows the median income of those localities. And you'll see there that Frederick County ranks right in the middle. But again, going back to the information on that previous slide, the tax rate is being kept at the low end of the localities. And this is another comparison slide, and I note, this is a somewhat different group of comparison localities. It's the 12 largest localities in the state, except that Loudoun is not included. The data was not available for Loudoun, but all...it's counties, only counties in this one. So it's the 12 largest counties. And you'll see that, again, Frederick County ranks on the low end for keeping expenditures in check at $2,526 of government expenditures per capita. And finally, in conclusion, county administration will obviously continue to work towards the budget objectives discussed during the budget work sessions. Discussion will continue during the work sessions and at the budget work session prior to the next Finance Committee meeting regarding budget initiatives. The presentation that's on the screen that I've just gone over tonight will be emailed to Board members tomorrow, and will also be available on our website. And this concludes the presentation in advance of the public hearing.
Questions? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, and the Board will now ask that the public hearing begin. I've read you the rules of order to remind you, limit your comments to three minutes, and please announce yourself and your magisterial district.
Signups.
Do we have a sign up?
We do, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, go ahead.
The first person signed up is Barbara Burrows from the Opeckin District.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, thank you for hearing me this evening. I'm Barbara Burrows from the Opeckin District. First of all, I'd like to say I have no connection of any kind with the fire department, but that's what I'm here to speak to you about tonight. I was the victim of a fire last year. The fire department and the sheriff's department asked for a combined 71 positions. The fire department has asked for double their budget and 54 positions. Now, if we note that the sheriff department is getting almost 50 percent of what they asked for, but the fire department's only getting 20 percent, and they use mostly volunteers. Now, I've been in this county about 30 years, and I've seen a lot of changes and the growth. I've seen that we have less volunteers than we used to have. I've used a rescue squad maybe six times. Now, last year I had a fire at my house, April the 6th. And what I'm about to say, I'm not trying to get anybody in trouble, I'm just telling you what happened. My neighbor was burning illegally. He was breaking different laws. We had to call the fire department because our yard was on fire, our bushes and trees, our fence, that kind of thing. The fire department got there pretty timely, but I have to tell you, the men were tired. They had been running calls all day according to what they told us themselves. It was a windy day in the spring, and a lot of people were burning brush illegally before 4 o'clock. They basically told us that they were tired and somewhat overwhelmed by the day's calls. Things were done incorrectly. The fire marshal was not called to the scene for investigation. He should've been called immediately to the scene before the scene becomes compromised, and that was not done. A report was not filed with the fire department headquarters. I found this out because I had to call the police because I've had a lot of trouble with this neighbor trying to destroy property and intimidate me and things like that, so I had to call the police. When the police got to the scene, they had no knowledge of anything that had happened because the report had not been filed. So the fire marshal on the phone asked the police officers to take pictures of the scene after the scene was compromised. When the report was filed, a week or two later, some things in the report were not correct. They were questionable. Basically, it said that maybe the firefighters did something they didn't do, or they...vice versa. And I'm not saying this to get anybody in trouble. These men did the best they could. They were very polite to us. They offered to transport my injured husband to the hospital. We declined that. But I'm just saying that we need more help. You can't have these men running around all day and being worn out and expect them to get everything straight. And this was just a small fire. You know, we don't want somebody to die. And we've got to think about liability for the county, too. So I'm just asking the fire department to get more of what they're asking for. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Williams.
Next is Renee Patrick, Blue Ridge Legal Services.
Gentlemen, I'm Renee Patrick. I'm the managing attorney at Blue Ridge Legal Services here in Winchester. As you know, we're a nonprofit, a legal aid society that provides free legal aid to low-income persons, and residents of Frederick County are included in that. I'm here tonight to say that you zeroed us out last year. We're asking you to at least put us back in for some amount. And I'd like to, in order to make you more aware of what we're doing, let me personalize this and give you some very quick stories about our clients. We had a disabled, single mother in Stevenson with debt problems. Her response to our help was, "I'm so glad there's a place like Legal Aid to help me because I've had six cancer surgeries, can't afford a lawyer, and needed all the help I could get." We had another disabled woman in Middletown with a landlord-tenant problem who said, "This case was very important to me to keep me in my home. They were going to raise my rent, said I owed back rent. I didn't, and now my rent is where I can pay, and I don't owe any back rent. Thank you so much." So we kept her in her home. We had a 62-year-old disabled man and his wife in Gore facing a foreclosure. His response was, "They helped me get a mortgage and a loan modification which I had been trying to get for three years." If any of you have friends who have tried to get a loan modification, that's not an unusual number of years. We were able to get that for him and help him save his house. A Frederick County woman with three children who's a victim of domestic violence said, "Your assistance may have saved the lives of my kids and myself." We have an attorney who, sad to say, has to...her entire caseload is nothing but domestic violence cases in this area, many of which occur in Frederick County. We had a 63-year-old disabled man from Stevens City who said, "My wife had a terminal disease. We couldn't afford to have our wills changed, but Blue Ridge Legal Services helped us and saved the day." These are struggling Frederick County residents that need your help and support. They may be poor, in fact, all of them were poor, but they're worthy of the help that you can give us and that we can give them. I hope you will reconsider your decision to continue to provide the county's fair share as all the other areas where we provide help and do give their fair share for civil legal assistance. The amount that we ask is a modest financial amount, yet it's very important to these folks to get justice and that we're the ones that help them do that. Thank you, gentlemen.
Next, Mr. Williams.
Marietta Cather Walls, Lord Fairfax Soil and Water Conservation.
Hi, I'm your elected volunteer director at the Soil and Water Conservation District, the Lord Fairfax District. And every year, it comes up for the budget, and for this year, I think it's proposed to give us $7,000. Just so you know what this district does, there are five different areas. There's Clark, Warren, Shenandoah, City of Winchester, and Frederick County that work together to try to make our water pure and safe for us to drink. It not only affects us this year, but it will affect us years down the road. And the money that is spent helps support five different employees that work for the Soil and Water District. And through all these different localities, we are to help make waterways safe and protected. And for Frederick County, just over this last year, or this year, is the cover crops for 166 acres, and that brings back $3,000 in cost share and $3,000 in tax credits. And then on the second project, there was 29 acres for row crops put back into grass lands, and that's like $2,500 in tax credits. But it's also been approved for three farmers in our area to get close to a quarter of a million dollars back from the state to help set up fences along waterways that will protect our water for the future. Because as you know, we get most of our city water and county water out of the Shenandoah River. So for us and for every citizen that drinks water from our tap that's supplied through the water system, to me, $7,000 is a small amount compared to what we can get back from our state and federal government if we just have education programs and have the technical support which these five individuals give to every individual landowner in our area. So to me, if we could support this water and soil district, to me, the water is a very high passion in my life to make sure that it stays clean and something that it's drinkable for us in the future. Because we don't want brown, green, blue water. Our water needs to be an important part of our economy and our...every citizen's involved with this. So thank you very much. Thank you for your all this time.
Next, Mr. Williams.
Mark Ready from the Gainesboro District.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and the Board. I am a teacher at Jamesville High School. I've been here for over 20 years. I just want to commend you all for the support you've given the school systems, the school system. And I just wanted to let you know that we do very good work, and there are a lot of students that have gone on to very prestigious universities and do very, very good work after they leave this county and represent us very well. On a personal note, I originally moved up to Enwood, West Virginia when I first started my family because I couldn't afford a big house. And...but when my daughter was in fourth grade, I made a decision to move back here because I wanted my daughter to be educated in this school system. And she has since graduated. She has earned herself a full tuition scholarship to a university in Ohio, and I just want to let you know that her support is very much appreciated, and as a parent and a taxpayer and a teacher, thank you very much.
Next, Mr. Williams.
Darren Jones from Stevens City.
Good evening. My name is Darren Jones, Opeckin District. I'm a resident of Frederick County, a patron of Bowman Library, and a homeschool dad. My wife and I moved to Frederick County in 2002. As we were driving to inspect the home that is now ours, we went past the then newly-open Bowman Library. Both of us immediately decided we wanted that house before we'd even seen it because it was a mile from the library. We make regular visits to Bowman. The children's librarian, Donna Hughes, has been a great asset in helping us and our kids find just the right books. She's put a lot of effort into special events like the monthly game night that my two older children enjoy and the weekly Lego night. Three of our four children have reached their seventh birthday, which means they now have their own library card, so we get stacks of books out each time and then pay stacks of fines when they don't get back right on time. But our fines, large as they may be, can't support the library. It seems inefficient to have the library open only three hours on Thursday. It closes before our kids are done with their schoolwork, and so we basically can't use the library on Thursdays. And so I'm asking to please increase the library funding to allow it to open again on Thursday afternoon. Thank you for your time.
Next, Mr. Williams.
Jack Lilis from Bat Creek District.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name's Jack Lilis, and I'm here to speak in support of the budget request for the sheriff's department and the fire and rescue department. During 2014, the fire and rescue department responded to upwards of 10,000 calls, 80 percent of which were emergency medical services. In so doing, they saved countless lives of our friends and neighbors. In fact, if it were not for them, I wouldn't be talking to you right now. Perhaps you have never yet had a need for their services, but probably you will in the future. Without them, you may end up as a statistic. And then there are the homes and other structures which have been saved from fire damage, perhaps as many as 2,000. In the meantime, the sheriff's department made 4,202 arrests, of which 1,940 were for felonies. Of the felony arrests, 386 were drug-related, and 298 of these were cleared by arrest. Drugs are a scourge to our populace and dealers- Drugs are a scourge to our populace, and dealers must be dealt with harshly. These two departments have something in common. They both strive to protect people's lives and property. The Fire Department saves homes and other property. Sheriff's Department, they save lives and property. Deputies are our first line of defense against those who would do us harm. They partner with other local sheriff's departments, police departments, Virginia State Police, Northwestern Regional Drug Task Force, the DEA, the FBI, and other agencies. In addition, the department's workload has been increased locally to provide protection and services for four new judges. I am in no position to ascertain the personnel needs of these two departments. They know best what they need. But this I do know: if they are not adequately staffed, our county residents will suffer. Already, we have had eight drug overdose deaths in our region this year. Last year, we had a total of 33, which was up from 21 in 2013 and only one in 2012. Gents, the trend is going in the wrong direction. The war on drugs must be fought on a national, state, and local level, but you're in no position to fight that at the national level. No way you can stop drugs coming into our country, and you're very limited as what you can do preventing them from coming across state lines. But we can work on what is happening with the drug dealers here in the county. You must be active in fighting drugs in Frederick County, and in so doing, you will be protecting your constituents. I am fully aware that making drug decisions is a difficult task. I've been there. I've done that same as you're doing. But difficult or not, these decisions have got to be made. It may not be possible to give these two departments everything that they request this year. But if not, please fund them to the max extent possible and make an effort to make the difference up the next two years. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Williams?
Jerry Swager from Gainesboro District.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm Jerry Swager, a resident of Frederick County residing in the Gainesboro District. I am the mother of two students in Frederick County Public Schools and happen to also be the Director of Elementary Instructional Services for the county school system. Last year, the Board of Supervisors provided the additional funding needed to support Frederick County Public Schools' implementation of full-day kindergarten this fall. As one of the people closely involved with the planning and rollout of this project, I'm here tonight to thank you for doing the right thing. I thank you on behalf of the over 945 kindergarten students in Frederick County Public Schools, on behalf of their families, on behalf of our teachers, and on behalf of the community, even if they don't all realize what a tremendous accomplishment this was. Because of your willingness to support our schools last year, 945 kindergarten students already had more hours of instruction in this school year than kindergarten students in previous years all year. As a direct result of your support for Frederick County Public Schools, our current kindergarten students are showing gains in reading that range anywhere from 10 to 16 percentage points higher than kindergarteners last year. When you visit kindergarten classrooms this year, students are reading and writing at levels we have typically not reached until the end of kindergarten, if not until first grade. The extra time has made a difference for our youngest students. Your support has already made a difference for our youngest students. Literacy is not the only area impacted by full-day kindergarten. Our kindergarten students this year are able to spend more time in class with their teachers working on early numeracy skills in order to build the critical foundation needed for more complex mathematics. 945 students are experiencing more with math, talking more about math, and becoming better mathematical thinkers than their counterparts from previous years. Additionally, kindergarten students this year are able to engage in learning that helps them behave like scientists to learn science concepts. There is time for them to observe goldfish and guppies, to participate in simple experiments, to write about their findings, and to explore the world around them. There was not time for these learning experiences in a half-day program. Full-day kindergarten in Frederick County is already making a difference for our children. I would venture to say the families of 945 kindergarteners, especially families who also experienced the half-day program, would agree that full-day kindergarten is making a difference for them. In the years ahead, we know our teachers in our schools will see what a difference full-day kindergarten has made, and many years after that, our community will continue to reap the benefits of children who have attended full-day kindergarten. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, for the courage you displayed last year by doing the right thing. Your support for Frederick County Schools allowed us to fulfill a dream that had been in development for more than a decade. Thank you for giving our youngest students better opportunities and helping them play on the same field that nearly all of the other five-year-olds in Virginia have been playing on for years. We could not have done this without you. I would like to end by thanking you in advance for approving Frederick County's proposed FY 2016 budget as advertised. We appreciate your continued support for our efforts, as we have already demonstrated that our efforts, our programs, and our schools do make a difference. Your support makes a difference. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Williams?
Jay March, Gainesboro District.
Good evening, Chairman Schickel, members of the board. I'm Jay March from the Gainesboro District. I appreciate you giving consideration to the taxpayers' wallet by adjusting the property tax rate downward in an attempt to keep our budget as revenue-neutral as possible. But I do have a couple of issues I'd like to address. The recently-approved FY 2015-2016 Frederick County Capital Improvements Plan lists the fourth high school as the third priority for the school board. It indicates that the current high school program capacity is 4,050 students and that the projected enrollment in 2019 will be 4,236, an increase of 186 students. Looking back, I would note that in the 2013 SIP, the high school was estimated to cost $64 million with that same capacity of $1,250. In 2014, it went to $70 million with that same capacity. In 2015, it's now at $92 million with that same capacity. However, just last week, I read in the school board minutes that the new capacity of this high school is 1,725. I'm not sure how we found 475 more new spaces, but I think this deserves attention as our projected census increase was 186. We are building a facility for 1,725. There must be an explanation. I believe it's difficult for constituents and taxpayers to review all the documents and changes and come away with a good understanding on why we are preparing to build one of the most expensive high schools here in Frederick County. One point I'm attempting to highlight is the increase in debt service to the Virginia taxpayers that we must continue to take on. It wasn't too long ago that this board did pass a resolution admonishing the General Assembly for not adequately funding government schools. I don't think we can have it both ways. If we're not good stewards here in the county and how we fund public education, we should not cast stones and pass the responsibility on to the state. I would also like to make comment on information I read in the Finance Committee meetings and an article provided by the Winchester Star on March 11th. The county and the schools have a pay disparity. It would appear that the school board alleges that there is a pay disparity between county employees and school employees. I've spoke to this board and the school board on several occasions about the benefits of adopting a merit pay system. The county has done this. The school board has elected not to. Based upon this policy, I do not believe we can accept the proposition of a pay disparity. I once again encourage you to recommend that the school board move to a merit pay system for those job categories that you called out in the minutes and that were in the newspaper. Additionally, I would recommend that you compare these positions to the private sector and include private schools as well. If I got another second or two here, I would also mention that in the proposed budget, I saw that there was $877 million worth of exemptions for real estate taxes here in our county. I would ask that you really review these exemptions and see if there is not a way that we could provide more revenue to this county with those exemptions. Thank you for letting me address the board.
Next, Mr. Williams?
Joy Kirk, Back Creek District.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. My name is Joy Kirk, and I am the President of the Frederick County Education Association and a resident of the Back Creek District. I have been a teacher in Frederick County Public Schools for 20 years, and during that time, I have watched my colleagues consistently put kids first. The willingness to do what is right and best for students is the key to our success. The students are our focus and the reasons we do the many things we do. I would like to share with you some examples of how my colleagues put kids first. Many teachers use their lunch as a time to help struggling students and provide remediation. Teachers across the county come in early or stay late to provide enrichment or remediation opportunities for students. They volunteer their time to help with community service events on weekends and in the evening because they make a difference for our students and in our community. Faculty and staff volunteer their time to make athletic events, club events, dances, and more happen at our schools year-round. These individuals are giving of their own time without hesitation because they put kids first. Teachers are not the only ones putting kids first. We have custodians who serve as mentors for students who need role models. Library aides who take the time to learn the name of every student who check out books. Why? Because calling someone by their name makes a difference. Cafeteria workers who ask students about their day as they go through the lunch line can make a bad day great. We have bus drivers who have provided winter coats for students in need on their bus routes. These are caring individuals who put kids first. What about administrators? We have administrators coordinating teachers to analyze and unpack SOLs and providing professional development because they put kids first. We have administrators who kiss cows when students meet reading goals. We have administrators organizing fill-the-bus campaigns to help students have nourishment on the weekend. We have administrators who stay longer than necessary because a parent needed to work late. Our administrators put our kids first. These are just a few of the ways that faculty and staff put kids first. We know the students in our classroom are the future of this community. I am not just a Frederick County Public School teacher. I am a proud stepmother of three—pardon me—Jameswood High School graduates. My daughters got their educational foundation in this school because of caring adults at Apple Pie Ridge Elementary School, Orchard View Elementary School, Frederick County Middle School, and Jameswood High School. Each of my daughters had a very different academic path, but their beginnings were all here in Frederick County. At this time next year, I will be the proud stepmother of three college graduates. They started here. I am proud that I am a colleague of the individuals who started my daughters down that path. I am proud that I am part of the group that put them first. We have caring individuals in this county. They put our students first. Thank you for considering the advertised budget.
Next, Mr. Williams?
Larry Sullivan, Shawnee District.
I'm Larry Sullivan from the Shawnee District. I would like to talk about the Hanley Regional Library. Our per capita expenditure for the Hanley Regional Library system is $19 a person. That is in the bottom 1/4 of all the library systems in the state of Virginia. And for instance, Stanton pays $45 per capita. I would like to say that something can be done for very little cost would be to restore the Thursday hours that were cut during the '08-'09 economic crisis. Right now, the library's open 10 to 8 on Monday and Tuesday. Wednesday, Friday, and Saturday is 10 to 5, seven hours each. Thursday is 10 to 1, three hours only. We've already paid for the library system. The incremental cost to add the five hours more to the Thursday would be a low incremental expense, but would be a great convenience to the citizens. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Williams?
Maureen Gorman, City of Winchester.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight to the people who have the daunting responsibility of determining how to provide financial support to the various departments of our community. My name is Maureen Gorman. I am the school counselor at Apple Pie Ridge Elementary School. My career has included teaching in Loudoun County, at Sacred Heart Academy, and at the Powhatan School. I counsels adults and families in my Winchester private practice. I have extensive experience discussing serious school issues with parents, teachers, and students of all backgrounds and philosophies. Often, the school counselor has a unique perspective on a community because he or she is the confidential recipient of disclosures from students, teachers, administrators, school nurses, parents, grandparents, community agencies such as DSS and the Police Department, and occasionally even pediatricians, coaches, piano teachers, and martial arts instructors. I'm not among those Frederick County Public School employees who will benefit most from a salary increase because I can see retirement in the not-too-distant future. However, I am here to speak for those young men and women who have come to the education field with new ideas, data-driven practices, and good old-fashioned enthusiasm. The technology skills, broad knowledge base, and amazing amounts of energy with which they embrace postgraduate programs and volunteer positions in the community are remarkable. From where I stand, it appears that Frederick County Public Schools' teachers are overachievers. Our teachers and staff are providing more high-level instruction and seeing more students succeed than should be expected based on reduced support staff, dated technology, and large class sizes. Several buildings are focused schools this year, and as a consequence, test scores are getting a major percentage of everyone's attention, and the pressure is intense. Teachers are spending many after-work hours reading research and redesigning lesson plans to meet ever-changing standards, trying each new best practice, and overall reinventing themselves as professional educators to meet these higher expectations. They believe that unless they each keep doing what must feel like the work of two teachers, their students may not succeed. I am amazed and inspired by them. They don't slow down, and they don't give up. But fatigue and burnout follow when we continue to take for granted that our teachers can withstand the ongoing pressure. Teachers need to feel that it is okay to spend their evenings, weekends, and holidays nurturing themselves and their loved ones. More support staff, improved equipment, and smaller class sizes would go a long way. My time is up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Williams?
Susan Brinkmeyer, Stonewall District.
Good evening, Chairman Schickel, Mr. DeHaven, and members of the board. My name is Susan Brinkmeyer. I was resident in Stonewall District, and I serve with pride as the principal of Frederick County Middle School. I'm here tonight to support adoption of the budget as advertised. A quality educational program is like a jigsaw puzzle. It has many different pieces that must fit together to create a finished picture, and the reality is that each piece of the puzzle does have a financial cost. In today's classroom, one important piece of the puzzle is technology, and I'll talk to you tonight about some of the ways we use technology. Teachers use technology in many ways to engage their students, to expand student thinking, and to deliver instruction that meets individual needs. As part of the recent one-to-one division-wide technology initiative, all sixth-grade students received Chromebooks this year to support their learning. This initiative helped to provide a level playing field by making the newest technology available to all of our sixth graders, and we look forward to expanding this initiative to seventh and eighth-grade students countywide next year. Students in our division's schools have had many opportunities to use those Chromebooks and other technologies. For example, seventh graders use the Chromebooks and the Career Cruising site to explore career options and to conduct research projects on careers of their choice. Students interact with their teachers using educational games such as Perdeck, Google Classroom, and teacher-created HyperDocs. In health classes, students explore their choice of social justice topics and create videos that challenge negative stereotypes and promote positive character traits. In all of our classes, students use technology to explore, to collaborate, communicate, and create. Technology is a vital piece of a high-quality educational program, but we know it's just one piece of the puzzle. Other puzzle pieces include a salary initiative to attract and retain high-quality teachers, instructional coaches to help teachers continually refine their skills, and special programs to help our neediest students. We also have to consider other instructional programs and things like class sizes and school buses and facility needs, and we know the list goes on and on. Each piece of that puzzle has a financial cost, but an even greater benefit for our students. As a taxpayer, voter, and educator, I know that by investing in our schools, we invest in the future of our community. Tonight, I ask each of you to carefully consider all the needs of our school division, and I urge you to vote on April 8th to fund the budget as advertised. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Williams?
Ann Clausen, Opeckin District. John Clausen, Opeckin District.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the supervisory board. My name is John Clausen, and I've been a resident of Frederick County since 1989 and a resident of Opeckin District since 1990. And I'm here on behalf of the Hanley Regional Library System. I happen to also be on the Board of Directors for that system. I used to train my retrievers in that field where Bowman Library is built. Now, I've lived there since it was Macedonia Church Road, not Tasker Road, so I've watched it grow. My family and all the families of that area, plus families of Clark County and surrounding counties, have come in and used the facility and used the services. I'm asking you to carefully consider the request, the full request, to support the library system this year from Frederick County. The incremental increase, which we are asking for, is very small in relation to the benefits it is giving to the residents of the county and also to the services that are being provided for, not only for the typical literacy and reading and books and everything, but we do other things there at the libraries that are helping people find jobs, research career opportunities, teach their kids at home, help them expand their college and educational opportunities for their future. This is a very worthwhile investment on behalf of the residents of Frederick County, and I ask you to fully support it for the, for this upcoming fiscal year. Thank you very much.
Next, Mr. Williams.
Mark Regan, Stonewall District.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and fellow supervisors. My name is Mark Regan, and I reside in the Stonewall District. Tonight, before we spend one more nickel on Frederick County taxpayers' money, we need to correct a few problems of serious importance. On December 11th, 2013, against the will of the people, you passed a waiver that allows Carmuse Lime and Stone to build two 193-foot kilns, which the county mislabeled as one kiln unit. Believe me, that's not good math. The waiver was written to accommodate misleading statements from Carmuse Lime and Stone spokesmen that were addressed to the board, citizens of Frederick County, and local media. Carmuse spokesman made many fraudulent statements, including that two kilns would improve the surrounding air quality. How are two kilns that are going to emit annually up to 772,000 pounds of nitrogen oxide, 408,000 pounds of sulfur dioxide, 956,000 pounds of carbon monoxide, 52,000 pounds of organic compounds, 12,000 pounds of sulfuric acid mist, 217,000 pounds of particulate matter, which is already a problem here? As you, last month, we were the number four in the United States for the highest air pollution. Number four. That's the United States, not Virginia, the United States. By the way, these two kilns are located about 3,000 feet from Stonewall Elementary. How could anyone vote to approve something of this magnitude, 3,000 feet away from an elementary school, as well as the many residents and teachers in this area? You can review this meeting online at the county webpage, December 11, 2013. I've been to several other publicly announced meetings on this issue with the Department of Environmental Quality, and not one county or school official were there to support the citizens, the school, or the children. In fact, not one county or school official were there at all. Ladies and gentlemen, as you come here to speak tonight and you tell us you didn't know anything about this, ask your representatives why you weren't informed about this. Because of the health, safety, and well-being concerns of residents and children in Frederick County and Winchester, I call on you, and I'm sure others will agree, to shut down Carmuse until an independent study has been performed and a written statement sent to all Frederick County citizens indicating that no damage in any form has been or will be caused by Carmuse or any other pollutant factors in this area. In the future, I call you to repeal this application, repeal it for the height waiver, and all rezoning involving my representatives. Five times I've been to a meeting here and had no district representation due to possible conflict of interest, and that's not what I pay for. I believe my taxes should be refunded dating back to 2011 regarding an earlier Carmuse rezoning. Thank you very much.
Next, Mr. Williams.
Christine Germaier, Gainesboro District.
My name is Christine Germaier. I live in the Gainesboro District. I'm here representing a multifaceted group of individuals: the spouse of a teacher, a mother of special-needs children, chairman of SEAC, and finally, as an advocate for public education. I appreciate you allowing me your time. I would like to share the success Frederick County Public Schools is making in the lives of its students and families. In 2013, the Frederick County Public Schools Special Education Advisory Committee launched a series of evening workshops for families in our community after learning about the I'm Determined Project. For those that don't know, it is a statewide program funded by the Virginia Department of Education. This project was designed to help students with disabilities overcome their challenges to become advocates in their lives. To cap off our series of workshops, last year, we hosted a youth and parent summit, the first of its kind. It was a conference-style, multi-session program which offered something for everyone. We received a tremendous amount of support from community members who donated items, services, and their time. The event was so successful, key members have been asked to present this unique model throughout the Commonwealth. The ideology of this project has been adopted by several schools, with Gainesboro Elementary leading the cause in an extraordinary way. I invite you all to join us April 25th, when we host our second Youth and Parent Mini Summit to our students and families in Frederick County. After hearing about our success, the Virginia Department of Education is sending a team of individuals to participate in the event. The feedback from those who attended the summit last year has helped increase the support we're now receiving from our local community. The response has been humbling and heartwarming. In closing, it is my hope that you will continue to support the positive and lasting impact Frederick County Public Schools is having in the Commonwealth of Virginia as you develop the 2015-2016 budget. Once again, I thank you for your time and your serious consideration.
Next, Mr. Williams.
Ben Waterman, Opeckin District.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Benjamin Waterman, chairman of the Frederick County School Board and also resident of the Opeckin District. On behalf of the school board, I'd like to thank each of you for working with us throughout the budget process, listening to our concerns, and joining with us in seeking solutions. Although the budget that is the subject of tonight's public hearing will not provide the school division with all of the funds that have been requested and frankly are needed, it will allow us to begin to address our most critical needs. The school board's budget priorities this year include instructional initiatives to address increased accountability and to improve student achievement, competitive salary schedules that are designed to recruit and retain highly educated and highly qualified educators, and restoring operational funds for technology initiatives and school buses. With your approval of the county budget that's been advertised, the school board will be able to partially address the budget priorities we established this past November. Although we are nearing the end of the budget development process for FY 2016, I believe it's important that we keep our eyes on what's coming in the future. Although we have several major capital projects on the horizon that require our attention and investment, we cannot allow them to distract us from the many operational needs that must be addressed moving forward. Although we are positioned to make the salaries of some school staff more competitive next year, more work will be needed in the future in order to provide salaries that are competitive in our own backyard as well as regionally. In addition, we need to continue to restore, rebuild, and reposition ourselves: offering a preschool program to equip young children for greater academic success, expanding the highly successful Chromebook one-to-one initiative, and maintaining and replacing technology on a reasonable schedule. Purchasing replacement school buses and protecting the facilities through proper maintenance are all issues that will continue to be priorities for the school board and ones in which we need your support. Finally, we need to be proactive and not reactive when it comes to the county's future growth and the additional needs it will create on our quality of life. From a school perspective, more students will indeed translate into a need for more staff and other investments in order to assure the quality of education be provided to students in Frederick County that remains available to students in the future. We cannot lose momentum or take steps backwards. We can, again, we thank you. We deeply thank you for working together with us through this budget process, and I ask you that you support the budget that is the subject of tonight's hearing. And we look forward to continue our work together as we address the needs of the students of this county and the families of this county. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Williams.
Those are all the speakers who signed up in advance.
Is there anyone else that'd like to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm David Savine, superintendent of Frederick County Public Schools and resident of the Shawnee District. I'm here this evening to thank you for your willingness to work collaboratively with our school board and for your continued commitment to invest in our children and our community's future. We certainly have a lot to be proud of in Frederick County Public Schools. Our mean SAT scores last year exceeded the average for all students taking the test. In addition, our scores hit a four-year high in 2013. We have achieved the highest graduation rates in four years, with 95% of the 12th grade membership graduating in 2013-14. I must add, this exceeds both state and national averages. We ranked 10th among 134 school divisions in industry certifications earned. 81% of our graduates continue their education either at either two- or four-year colleges, and others join the military or begin working within our community utilizing the skills they have acquired and developed as students in our school division. You witness the work of our students each year through the team projects completed by our government service learning students. Community service is a top priority of Frederick County Public Schools. Our students are giving back in many ways. By working collaboratively with various government agencies, they find creative solutions to real problems faced by our community. Thank you for your continued support of our students and FCPS. Your support is a wise investment for growing and maintaining a strong community. I've shared the economic impact studies pertaining to the value of supporting public education completed by Arlington and Virginia Beach School Divisions. Investing in public schools strengthens our potential for increased revenues as we strive to create and maintain a thriving community supported by an exceptional public school system. The additional $10.4 million requested in my proposed budget is an attempt to address the most critical needs of our school division, but certainly not all of our needs. If that were the case, my initial request would have been far greater. In closing, I ask that you approve the budget as advertised. Again, thank you for your support that you've demonstrated over the past several years and for your continued willingness to invest in our children. Mr. Chairman, I would like to add, earlier comment was made referencing the fourth high school construction. While this is a public hearing on the FY 16 budget, I will add that it is my intent as a school superintendent to work with our board, and once the new county administrator is on board, I'll work with Mrs. Guyton to establish a joint meeting to address the fourth high school, just as we did with our, our middle school, in a very public meeting where we can be very transparent regarding that process and the construction. And as I look at recent figures that are based on, based, that relate specifically to our fourth high school construction, I think you'll find, and you will see, that our construction figures and the Commonwealth in comparison are certainly not on the high end, not on the low end, but probably somewhere in the middle. But we will be, I will be pleased to work with the new county administrator to schedule a joint meeting so that we can work through those figures and comparisons regarding our fourth high school. Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to address the board?
Hello, I am Rebecca Heisner. I am a graduate of Jameswood High School and a current student at James Madison University. I'm here to talk about my experience at Frederick County Public Schools. Six years ago, when I started my freshman year at Jameswood High School, I would never have been able to walk up to the front of this podium and talk to you today. I was incredibly nervous about speaking in front of people, and I honestly just, I had no idea what I wanted to do with my life. And through various classes and incredible teachers at Jameswood High School, I have been able to decide that I want to go into journalism and that I want to be a journalist. And this May, I will graduate from James Madison University with my degree, and it is all thanks to the incredible support and teachers that I have had at Frederick County Public Schools. Thank you.
Anyone else?
On the same note, my name is Braden Bean. I am also a student at James Madison University. I went to Red Bud Run Elementary School, Jameswood Middle School, and I graduated Jameswood High School in the class of 2012. I recently heard a statistic, and I don't know the exact number of hours, but it said that teachers, more than any other profession, touch you, your life individually, and impact you more than anyone else as far as professions go. And this really got me thinking about my experience at FCPS and what these teachers really did for me individually. One personal example that stands out in my head of a time that a teacher really helped me was my senior year of high school. I stressed myself about college so far that I ended up passing out one morning, and I couldn't go to school. And the next day, I told everyone it was dehydration. A teacher pulled me aside and asked me, "Was it really dehydration?" And of course, I wrote it off and just said, "Of course it was. Yeah, I'm fine." But I knew, deep in my heart, that it was really the stress that I was putting on myself that caused me to pass out that morning. And it was that teacher that really helped me realize that I needed to manage my stress and work to do that. And without that teacher, and the countless other times that teachers have helped me in FCPS, I wouldn't be the person standing here today. And I can tell you with confidence that those teachers are the reason that I'm standing here today. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one. We thank you for your participation. Your contributions at this hearing are an important part of the decision-making process, and so I will now declare this public hearing closed.
Mr. Williams, this is a meeting, sir, the meeting is still in session. Mr. Williams, did anyone sign up for citizen comments?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any Board of Supervisors' comments? Pleased you in the audience if you could keep it down, keep quiet, please, as you orderly move out. We have a meeting to conduct.
It never worked for me either. Except that.
Ladies and gentlemen, we still have a meeting in session. Would you please remove yourselves if you're finished? Ladies and gentlemen. Please allow us to conclude our meeting. Are there any Board of Supervisors' comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to comment on the request of the library, Hanley Library, to have the Thursday three hours reinstated. If there was any way possible, the board could work on that. I think it's a good idea, one that would benefit the community, and I'd like to see it established, so I'll throw that out for discussion.
Any other comments? All right, then let's move on to the minutes of the regular meeting, February 25th, 2015.
Chairman, made for approval is submitted.
We have a motion to approve. Is her second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion. Hearing on all is in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. The minutes of the regular meeting, February 25th, 2015, approved. Next, the budget work session, March 4th, 2015. All right, then let's move on to the minutes of the regular meeting, February 25, 2015.
Chairman, move for approval is submitted.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The minutes of the regular meeting, February 25, 2015, approved. Next, the budget work session, March 4, 2015. Supervisor Hess, I think, has a correction.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The minutes reflect that Supervisor Collins was absent from the meeting. It's my understanding that his resignation was effective prior to that meeting, so that recognition should be deleted from the minutes.
All right, with that change?
Yes, sir. That's a motion to amend the minutes to so reflect that deletion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Wells. Discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The minutes as adjusted for the budget work session, March 4, 2015, are approved. Next, we have a special presentation, and Vice Chairman De Haven will join. Can I have Tony Riley and Ricky McKee come forward, please? Been a long wait. We don't treat all the honored employees of the way that we did not adjust the agenda. Thank you for staying with us. Employee of the Month Award Program recognizes the county's employees as an important and valuable resource. On behalf of Board of Supervisors, it is my pleasure to present Anthony, Tony, Riley, and Ricky McKee for consideration as Employees of the Month for March 2015. Tony, a maintenance specialist, and Ricky, a maintenance custodian, are employed in the Frederick County Maintenance Department. They are being recognized for their dedication and willingness to go above and beyond the norm to accommodate all the requirements of their positions. In addition to their daily duties, both Tony and Ricky recently quit in much physical labor by removing over 80 filing cabinets and relocating office furniture for the Frederick County Department of Social Services to accommodate seven new positions within the department. Ricky and Tony maintain positive attitudes as well as courtesy for other employees, and their hard work never goes unrecognized. I will now entertain a motion to approve Tony Riley and Ricky McKee as Employees of the Month for March 2015. So moved, Mr. Chairman. Motion by Supervisor Wells and a second by Supervisor Hess. All is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Tony Riley and Ricky McKee are hereby recognized as Frederick County's Employees of the Month for March 2015. The Board of Supervisors extends its gratitude to Tony and Ricky for their outstanding performance and dedicated service, and we wish them continued success in future endeavors. Soon as I get there. Historic Resources Advisory, Red Bud, I do not think we have anybody, correct?
Do not.
Parks and Recreation Commission, Gainesboro, are we ready?
No, sir. We just recently received that resignation from Mr. Bordenus, and we'll work to get somebody of replacement.
Historic Resources Advisory, Stonewall?
Not yet, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and Sanitation Authority, not ready. So, we have no actions there. We'll move on to a resolution of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Frederick approving the lease financing of public facilities, et cetera. Go ahead, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the Board's January 28, 2015, meeting, the Board authorized the refinancing of bonds for the public safety building and the animal shelter through the Virginia Resources Authority pooled financing program. Since that meeting, staff has submitted an application to VRA for participation in their spring bond sale, which will close on May 13, 2015. The final step in the application process is for the Board to formally authorize the financing. You will find before you this evening a resolution of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Frederick, Virginia, approving the lease financing of public facilities and authorizing the leasing of certain property in connection therewith, the execution and delivery of a prime lease, and a local lease acquisition agreement, and a financing lease and other related actions. The resolution approves a financing in an amount not to exceed $19 million and a true interest cost not to exceed 6%. Staff is seeking Board approval of the resolution.
Questions? Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we adopt the resolution.
Or we have a motion by Supervisor De Haven. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Any discussion? Hearing on Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. Next is a request from the Commissioner of Revenue for refunds. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have two refunds. The first is for BMW Financial Services NALLC. County Attorney has received the Commissioner's request dated March 2, 2015, to authorize the Treasury to refund BMW Financial Services NALLC the amount of $2,796.01 for personal property taxes prorated in 2012 and 2013. This refund was the result of normal proration of vehicular taxes not previously requested by this financial company. The Commissioner verified that documentation and details for this refund meet all requirements pursuant to the provisions of Section 58.1-3981A of the Virginia Code. As county attorney, I note my consent to the proposed action. The Board of Supervisors will also need to act on the request for approval of a supplemental appropriation as indicated in the Commissioner's memorandum.
Questions? It's a pleasure, the Board.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the refund and the corresponding supplemental appropriation.
A motion by Supervisor Hess. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Any discussion? Hearing on Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes.
And the second one is a refund to a mortgage company, and it's a bit of an unusual circumstance. The county attorney has received the Commissioner's request dated March 12, 2015, to authorize the Treasury to refund to the mortgage company on parcel 750-4-14-558 the amount of $60,113.14 for real estate taxes billed in error and paid in 2014. This refund was the result of staff keying error in a wrong field which caused the overbilling. Basically, what happened is that error resulted, in this day and age, the mortgage companies get these bills electronically, and human beings don't see them until well after some buttons are pressed. The mortgage company's computer system probably just went ahead and paid it. It's a residential property. Obviously, it didn't have $60,000 due, and then they caught up with it later, and obviously it's properly refundable. The Commissioner has put in a new process so that this type of incident does not happen again. The Commissioner verified that documentation and details for this refund meet all requirements pursuant to provisions of Section 58.1-3981A of the Code of Virginia. As county attorney, I note my consent to the proposed action, and the Board will also need to act on the request for approval of a supplemental appropriation as indicated in the Commissioner's memorandum.
Questions? What is the Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval of the refund and the supplemental appropriation approval.
A motion by Supervisor Fisher. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing on Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. Refunds and appropriations are approved. Next, Human Resources Committee. Supervisor Hess?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the HR Committee met in the First Four Conference Room at 107 North Kent Street on Friday, March 13, at 8:00 a.m. The Committee has two recommendations requiring action. The first has already been dispensed with, with the award of the Employee of the Month awards handed out earlier. The other, the Board considered the request by the Economic Development Authority to create a position of research manager, and the Committee recommends approval.
A little clarification on the approval, is that next budget cycle, this budget cycle?
Just to create the position. This does not include funding.
Okay, all right. You heard the motion. Is there a second?
I second that, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Wells. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Lofton?
If I may, I don't object to this position being created. What I'm a little, I guess, fuzzy on is the fact that, according to the MOU, between the Board of Supervisors and the EDA, we were to have an annual meeting whereby we would look at where the EDA was headed, what direction we were giving them. So I just want to make sure that this position can be reconstituted as needed. If, in fact, the direction given to the EDA has changed a little bit, is there some flexibility in here that that position can be modified to suit? And I'm not saying that it will be modified, but can it be modified to suit the direction that the Board may give to the EDA?
Can we rely upon our appointee to the EDA to help us make sure that happens?
I can surely make a stab at that. I'd be happy to do that, but I just wanted to point that out. In talking with the EDA, in our discussions, we do want to have that annualized meeting in the near future.
I hope to have one such meeting before I'm out of town.
You should have that.
But was there consensus on the part of the EDA for the position? Okay. Any other discussion? All right, hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The position is created. Let's see, that's the end of the report? Supervisor Hess?
No, that's all. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Then we are down to Board Liaison Reports. Are there any? Supervisor Lofton?
Mr. Chairman, all Board members should have received the Social Services Annual Report, and if you have not, we will make sure you get one. But it has a lot of really interesting facts and figures in there, and one of the biggest and most interesting figures you will see is the amount of money that the social services, through federal and state grants, actually put into the local economy. So, like I say, if you have not gotten that report, please let me know, and I will make sure that you get that report. But it does have a lot of good facts and figures in there for your perusal.
Any other liaison reports? Now, we're down to citizen comments. Are there any citizens here who would like to speak to the Board about any topic? So, please come forward, give your name, magisterial district limits your comments, the three minutes, please.
Yes, sir, my name is Sean Graver in the Back Creek District. I'd just like to address this Board a little bit in request to know exactly what my Board is doing. I went to the January 28 meeting this Board had with the school board, and I heard you, Mr. Fisher, and I heard you, Mr. Lofton, lament about not being able to talk to your state delegates and representatives about unfunded state mandates. I thought it was very interesting subsequently, Mr. Berg, who is a delegate here for our region, had a regional town hall meeting in our backyard in Middletown on March 7, and I didn't see any of you gentlemen there. And I had some concerns, and I had some questions. So I went to that meeting, and I asked my questions, and wouldn't you know, I got my questions answered. On March 9, there was a town hall meeting in Middletown where they have their meetings, and I kind of wondered, would there be some representation there? Well, there again, there was none of the Board there, not even the representative, Mr. Lofton, who represents the town of Middletown. So I'd like to know, I keep hearing the gentleman that was here earlier this evening talking about different committees and not seeing any Board members at these different committees, what exactly my Board is doing? I'd really, really like to see us look at some of these unfunded state mandates and see what funds we can acquire. It seems to me that there's some good lip service, like we heard on the 28th of January, but when it comes time to talk to our state delegates, we're missing in action. Folks, I hope that doesn't continue. I got my questions answered. If you guys had questions, as you said, on the 28th, it may have been a good opportunity to have your questions answered as well. Thanks.
Good evening, Mr. Schickel and the Board. My name is Ken Hunter from the Back Creek District also. I have a structural report here from the 313 Bridge. The 313 Bridge that is Route 50, Route 81. This structural report is from VDOT. It was given to you all last year when it was done. It's of the decking rating, which is failing. It's also on the structural deficiency that is failing, the two piers. If something happens, you know, one of us drives across that bridge, and if it does fail, who's at fault? Is it you? Is it the county? I don't know. I think it's both. We should look to redo that bridge as quick as possible. And I'll leave this with you, because it's from VDOT.
It's for you guys.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, seeing no one, close the citizen comment portion of the meeting. Board of Supervisors' comments? I have just one. I know all of you have been approached by the rezoning applicants for Heritage Commons about a revisit in some way, some form of that project. I personally don't think there's anything wrong with you meeting individually with that applicant to determine if you think there's something in that project that should be resurrected. If enough of you think that, then obviously we would have to regroup with Mr. Williams on what the proper way to go about that was. But because of the actions of the applicant and the activity, I just kind of wanted to say in a public meeting that Board members are being approached, being asked to meet with folks about something that was denied in hopes that there is an alternative. And I sort of just wanted to make that acknowledgement public, and we will see where it goes in our future. Are any other Board of Supervisors members want to make comments?
Mr. Chairman, I was approached and spoke with our attorney, our county attorney, and asked for guidance as to how best to handle that situation, and I've received that from him, so that's where I am on that issue. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, move adjourned.
We have a motion to adjourn by Supervisor De Haven. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Fisher. All is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.